Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February twenty seventh, twenty four Town Council meeting. I would ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask that we take a moment of silence to reflect on all that's happening around us and around the world. Thank you. Pursuant to Mass General Law, I have to announce that this meeting is being audio and video recorded, and I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that is recording to please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none. Public comments. Genie, do we have anyone signed up?
No one's signed up.
Okay, we'll move on to council comments. Does any counselor have anything? So Connor, nothing.
Really? Not that I remember, anyway.
Okay. I would just like to make a comment. I had the chance to go back and review our meeting from January, and I just wanted to point out the Finance Oversight Committee is elected, selected by the President. We've been doing that for quite a while. They play an invaluable role. The council appreciates everything that they've done. After reviewing the meeting, they took a couple pretty good hits, and I think it was unfair. There are people that have stepped up and volunteered their time at the request of the President and the council, and I just want them to do, to realize that we do appreciate everything that they've done all through the years. And I'd just like to make that statement, just so that they know that we do appreciate what they've done.
And if I can just elaborate on that, the individuals who have historically been asked to serve are all professionals with banking backgrounds, other related financial backgrounds, and assess, assessor background. So they bring a skill set to the table that really helps to augment the entire process.
Is there any other council comments?
I'll just sort of add, you know, I think the subcommittee process is important. We can definitely always relook at retooling folks on it or, you know, the issues. But I think the budget is arguably probably, I mean, I've only been on for a few months, but the budget seems to be one of the most important tasks that this council has. So having it go through maybe some type of a more rigorous subcommittee process like we do with bylaws, like we do with some of these other matters, I think would be wise to keep, even if we look to adjust certain things to try to make it equitable, if that's what people want.
Thank you. Next up, Town Manager. Report.
We do. Awesome. Evening.
Good evening.
John brought up the budget, so we'll start with that. Kim, Rebecca and I have been meeting with department heads over the last few weeks, planning the FY twenty five operating budget. To date, we've met with nearly every department. I wrote this on Friday. At this point, I have met with every department. We've met with every department to discuss their submission, level one submissions, line by line, looking to sort of get to that level two, which is the Town Manager's draft submission for April one. I just want to thank everybody. Not only is it a huge part of the council's role, it's a, it's a Herculean task. It's not just the department heads. It's all the staff, boards, commissions, pretty much everybody that has an at eastsongmeadowma.gov email has, has put time into this process. And I just want to thank everybody because we know how much we've done and everyone else has done just as much just to get here. We still have a long way to go, but I just, I want to, I want to thank everybody because it's, it's been, it's been sort of an enjoyable process, if I can say that, to this point, meeting with everybody. Don't, you don't have to look at me like that. It, it, it's been very, very, very satisfying. Following the votes from last council meeting, we expect to enter into our contract with Westfield Gas and Electric, Whip City Fiber for the Fiber to the Home Project, hopefully this week. Jesse was off last week, so he's just giving it one more look and we'll get underway. I bring that up also because we have a, some good fortune and a little bit of a window here to get the crew, who is probably not going to get scheduled so early out in the next few weeks. And so I just kind of want a little public service announcement that if you see a strange vehicle from either Westfield, Whip City, or their design team, which is PVC, driving around, they're going to be starting their, their survey process and the data collection and just to, you know, begin the design process. So back on January twenty fifth, School Building Committee unanimously voted to select Fontaine Brothers to oversee construction in the new high school and the auditorium. Fontaine Brothers, obviously based in Springfield, local company, completed many similar projects in our area, including Minichog and West Springfield High, both through the MSP program. So their experience, expertise, and sort of their local team made them the, the preferred choice. Construction groundbreaking still scheduled to begin this summer, so that should be, that should be very exciting. Westcom Board of Directors voted to enter into contract with DA Sullivan of North Hampton to complete, to complete the renovations at the new headquarters, headquarters building on Shawningan Drive in Chicopee, the old Salter College building, I think everyone's aware. Construction cost is approximately fifteen and a half with a total project cost of eighteen and a half million. Construction scheduled to begin this March. I think I had emailed around the groundbreaking, groundbreaking
Fourteenth.
On the fourteenth. And hopefully ready for occupation, occupation at some point in the spring of next year. Last Thursday, State Fire Marshal John Daven held a press conference at the Fire Department to discuss fire safety and smoke detectors, very well attended by fire chiefs and fire service personnel across Western Mass. So thanks to everybody. The presenters were great, great information, stressing the importance of smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. And of course, special thanks to the MC for the event, Chief Morissette. They said something, there was an interesting stat, and then I guess I'll just throw it out the cuff, was something like four or five of every, four out of every five fires that happens because people don't have working smoke detectors. So like, it's a, it's a really important part of fire safety. Also, sticking with the Fire Department, we want to congratulate Deputy Fire Chief Chris Beecher, who along with thirty-three of his peers graduated from the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy's Chief Fire Officer Management Training Program, that's a mouthful, on January twenty fourth. Intensive fourteen-week, week course, wide array of topics, leadership, municipal finance, planning and budgeting, grants and emergency management, and strategic planning, to name a few. So our congrats to, to Chris. More news from the Fire Department. Congrats to James Goldrick on his recent, recent promotion to captain. Jim was promoted to captain on January twenty fourth. We had a lot of, lot of business on the twenty fourth. He's been with the Fire Department for seven years and recently earned his Fire Officer Two status, Fire Instructor Two certification, and certainly brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to lead Group B. So congrats to Jim. Rebecca had a kickoff meeting with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for the creation of the Center Town Districts. Part of the grant process will be creating a steering committee to assist staff with the creation of the bylaw and facilitate public interaction, which there will be a lot of. So Rebecca's been working to populate this committee, and we're also expecting some, some ex officio roles from Planning Board and, and Town Council. And I think we're probably, I think the original schedule and is still on schedule, we should be completed hopefully by the end of this calendar year. Eastsongmeadow Cultural Council received forty-two requests totaling thirty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars to fund events in town for twenty twenty-four. The allocation they received from Mass Cultural Council totaled eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. So they were able to award or partially award funding for twenty-one of those events. So a little partial list is Celebrate Yell, Rotary Summer Concert Series, Fourth July Parade, High School Model Congress, Springfield Symphony Orchestra, SSO Musical Petting Zoo for the library, Ms. Senior Massachusetts Musical Review for the COA, Painting Seascape at the library, sculpting and sculpting with wool at the Norcross House. So thanks to the Cultural Council. They too have sort of an arduous task. They, I walked in to their meeting the day that they were reviewing all, and they all had a stack of applications in front of them about this high. So I just want to thank them for all the work they do. Upcoming events, Presidential Primary on March fifth, Coffee with the Town Manager on March sixth, ten thirty AM here at the COA. After the holiday, we've settled into a first Wednesday of every month, ten thirty, Council on Aging will be here to answer any and all questions from all comers, except Ralph. Westcom Groundbreaking is March fourteenth at eleven AM, Shawningan Drive in Chicopee, and I think there's a rain-snow date for the twenty-first, same time, same place. We mentioned it before we started, so the Planning Board recently denied the site plan approval for the warehouse at three thirty Chestnut. I left that off my report, so I'm just bringing that to everyone's attention. And I did, as I mentioned before, have met with every department now because I met with Superintendent Smith this morning, our first of hopefully a few meetings before, before, I hope, our April first submission and certainly before the School Committee votes to pass forward their, their budget. So that was a very nice meeting. Obviously Gordon's a wonderful person to sit down and chat with whenever you get a chance, but it was, it was a nice meeting this morning. So, and that is all I have tonight. I do have, there was an attachment to this based on Mr. O'Shea's request for the updates to the reserve and activity for FY twenty-four. So that's with the report, and if you have any questions or anything to add, let me know. Thank you.
Connor, questions? Just two comments. One, thank you for the attachment, Kim, because that was perfect and exactly what I was looking for.
Okay, perfect.
And then two was just an addendum to your mention about the budget. We had finished our Capitol Committee last Thursday, our meeting. So we're concluded with that and recommendations to use.
Awesome. Well, I look forward to those. Thank you. I know that was a, again, I thank everybody on the Advisory Committee because that, again, is a lot of submissions for a lot of people that I'm guessing, having been on it last year, are very convincing in their arguments at the table, and it's hard to, to sift through all those projects and decide which ones are going to be taken on. So thank you to the whole Advisory Committee and Connor as well, obviously.
Any other questions? I will say thank you. Let's see.
You have members, you have another addendum. I bet it has something to do with the March fifth primary.
I'd bet you it does. I just wanted to announce the early in-person voting started Saturday. We had seventy-seven people come in. It runs Monday through Friday at the library conference room from eight to four. We had about sixty-three people yesterday, about fifty today. So it's been steady. It's been good. We have had about twenty-four hundred people request mail-in ballots, and we sent out, let's say we sent out twenty-four hundred, received and processed over twelve hundred today. It's a lot of work, a lot of steps to it. I really appreciate my staff. They've been working really hard besides trying to keep up the census forms and dog licensing and just everyday stuff. So we're very busy in the office. And Election Day is March fifth. Today was the last day to request a vote-by-mail ballot by five o'clock. But if you have a mail-in ballot, please drop it off, mail it in. It has to be at the clerk's office by eight PM on Election Day. We do check that drop box at eight o'clock and go back to the polls with what's ever in there.
Thank you.
I had the chance to vote early on Saturday, so it went very smoothly.
Oh, good.
Didn't notice it. It did seem like there was, maybe it was just a time of day I went, it seemed like there was more people there than I've early voted in the past, and usually it's been kind of quiet, but.
Right, right. I think it helps to have it at the library, and Katie is wonderful, the director, and accommodating us and setting everything up for us. And I think people will go to the library and go, I can vote, because they don't realize it, but.
Or even if they're going to a store around there, because it's just.
Right, we do have some signs up, yeah. So it's going well.
Rebecca, I see a hand. Would you like to chime in?
Just to offer a couple of details. So the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is on the March nineteenth agenda to present an overview of the Center Town District planning process and give an overview of what this is going to look like for the community. So I just want to get that on your radar at this point.
That's the Planning Board meeting.
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if anyone has a chance to stop by the clerk's office and see Genie, it is quite the process that they have. They have ballots stacked up. They have little files with the cards in them and this and that, and it is an entire process. But you can see, like when I stopped in her office, literally her office is covered. They stack everything because of all the ballots. And it appears as though a lot more people are requesting the mail-in ballots than what's ever happened in the past.
Right, and so they get the postcards from the state. If you're a registered voter, you get the postcards from the state, not from our office. And the first box is all elections. So we have to process them for all elections this year to have a vote-by-mail ballot mailed to them.
Quite the process. Tom, do you know when, I think the spring CPC application process?
April one.
That's when, that's the deadline for submissions?
Are due April one.
And do our departments receive an email or a notice to say if you have any projects that you think may fit under CPC to submit that? Or can we send it out?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's sort of how it happened last year for the October slash postponed December submission. But we will make sure that that happens, for sure. And I, I think, and I haven't seen the whole Capitol Plan.
There are a couple in there.
But I believe there was some suggestions for that, right, in the, in the Capitol Plan as well. So we won't, in all likelihood, won't let a deadline go by without submitting an application.
Well, it's nice to see that there is some funding in there. I know when I was the chairman, our whole goal was to try and build it up some in case whether it be a parcel of land came available or something with a larger price tag came along, that we had funding to be able to do it. And looks like it's worked. Any other council comments? Okay, I believe, yes, all right.
We got you to six fifteen tonight.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's why. Whatever happens.
Yeah, I was worried looking at it.
We have a public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing for second reading for the proposed bylaw, Chapter five hundred E, fine, fee, fine, and penalty schedule. Council members present are Matt Voucher, Kathy Hill, Ralph H., Connor O'Shea, and John Torsa. I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The Eastsongmeadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four at six fifteen PM in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty-eight North Main Street for the purpose of addressing a proposed new bylaw, Chapter five hundred Fee, Fine, and Penalty Schedule. This new bylaw creates a listing of all fees, fines, and penalties within a fee schedule for all town departments. The hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar with the link below. Information relating to this bylaw is available for public inspection at the Town Clerk's Office, sixty Center Square. To view an electric, electronic version of the proposed amendments, please visit Town's website for the council. Jean R. Fogletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you. So now we have the huge task of council reading this into because when the charter was created, someone came up with the brilliant idea that we had to read every one of them. That would be myself. So as council members, would we like to do basically two sections at a time, like a five A and a five B, and then the next person reads? Matt, would you like to start?
I'd love that.
Tell you what, I've got these two.
Thank you.
It is the index and.
All right. That guy just read the end. I always have trouble to turn.
You got to skate it to the top.
All right, cool.
Subsection five hundred.
Oh, sorry, that's the other document. This one.
So basically read everything on the page.
Got it. Chapter five hundred Fee, Fine, and Penalty Schedule. History adopted by the Town Council of the Town of Eastsongmeadow, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Amendments noted where applicable. Subsection five hundred Fee Schedule Index. Subsection five hundred one, general fees, fines, and penalties. Subsection five hundred two, Assessor's Department Fees, Fines, Penalties. Oh, is that a section or a subsection?
My name is.
That's a subsection. Section, oh, and then it's subsections. Okay, got it. All right, subsection five hundred three, Building Department Fees, Fines, Penalties. Subsection five hundred three A, General Fees. Subsection five hundred three B, Residential Building Permit Fees. Subsection five hundred three C, Commercial Building Permit Fees. Subsection five hundred three D, Residential Electrical Permit Fees. Subsection five hundred three E, Commercial Electrical Permit Fees. Subsection five hundred three F, Plumbing and Gas Permit Fees, Residential. Subsection five hundred three G, Plumbing and Gas Permit Fees, Commercial. Subsection five hundred four, Council on Aging Department Fees, Fines, Penalties. Subsection five hundred five, Public Works Department Fees, Fines, Penalties. Subsection five hundred five A, General Fees. Subsection five hundred five B, Life Cycle Maintenance Fees. Subsection five hundred five C, Sanitary Sewer Service Fees. Subsection five hundred five D, Storm Water Service Fees. Subsection five hundred five E, Transfer Station Fees. Subsection five hundred five F, Water Service Fees. Subsection five hundred five G, Water Sewer and Storm Water Rates. Subsection five hundred six, Fire Department Fees, Fines, Penalties. Subsection five hundred seven, Health Department Fees, Fines, Penalties. Subsections five hundred eight, Library Fees, Fines, Penalties. Subsection five hundred nine, Local Licensing Authority Fees, Fines, Penalties. The next page, continued. Subsection five hundred ten, Planning and Community Development Department Fees, Fines, Penalties. Subsection five hundred ten A, Conservation Commission Fees. Subsection five hundred ten B, Planning Department Fees. Subsection five hundred ten C, Zoning Board of Appeals Fees. Subsection five hundred eleven, Police Department Fees, Fines, Penalties. Subsection five hundred twelve, Town Clerk Fees, Fines, Penalties. Please contact individual departments for additional information or explanation of fees, fines, and penalties. All right, and then on to second page here. Chapter five hundred Fee, Fine, and Penalty Schedule. Subsection five hundred one, General Fees, Fines, and Penalties. And then we got general penalty, a bylaw violation is a fee of two hundred dollars, and the reference or comment is E code subsection one dash two. And then we have, under nuisances, administrative fee for correcting nuisance vegetation violations, a fee of two hundred dollars, and a reference comment of E code subsection three hundred seventy-six dash two.
Thank you. Kathy, would you like to read the next two sections?
Certainly. Fee, Fine, and Penalty Schedule, Section five hundred dash two, Assessor's Department Fees, Fines, and Penalties. A Butters List, standard list of a butters, the fee is twenty-five dollars. Manually generated weak request, standard fee, twenty-five dollars plus two dollars per additional butter, a butter. And the fee again is twenty-five dollars plus two dollars per additional butter. Income and Expense Penalty Fee. The reference is Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight D. Section five hundred three, five hundred dash three, Building Department Fees, Fines, and Penalties. Subsection five hundred dash three A, General Fees, Fines, and Penalties. Mass State Building Code, seven, eight, zero CMR violations. The fee is one thousand dollars maximum per day, and the reference is Mass General Law, Chapter one forty-eight, Section thirty-four C. And zoning bylaw violations, the fee is two hundred dollars, and the reference is E code Section one dash two and Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight.
Thank you. Our next section is the five hundred dash three, the Building Department Fees, Fines, and Penalties. This is subsection five hundred dash three B, Residential Building Permit Fees. Residential one or two-family dwellings. For a new single-family dwelling includes attached garage, finished basement, and bonus rooms. Fee is seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost, and the reference is a minimum fee of a thousand dollars. Multi-family and condos, fee is seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost, and the reference is the minimum fee is seventy-five dollars. Foundation only, seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Alterations and renovations, seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost, minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Swimming pool in-ground, seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Swimming pool above ground, seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost, minimum fee seventy-five dollars. Solar panels, seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost, minimum fee seventy-five dollars. Detached garage, seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost, minimum fee seventy-five dollars. Storage shed and accessory structure over two hundred square feet. The fee is seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost, the minimum fee is seventy-five dollars. Masonary or chimney, it's seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost, the minimum fee seventy-five dollars. A wood stove or pellet burning stove, seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Siding, roofing, windows and doors, seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost, minimum fee seventy-five dollars. Open porches or decks, fee is seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Demolition, again, the fee is seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. We're continuing on with the residential one and two-family dwellings. Fences over seven foot in height, the fee is seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Pool fences not associated with a building permit, it's seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Mechanical permits, cheap pedal, the fee is seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Insulation, seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Retaining walls, forty-eight inches high from the. Retaining walls, forty-eight inches high from the bottom of the footing or greater. Um, seven dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. A temporary trailer, seven dollars per one thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars. Uh, signs, seventy-five dollars per sign. Replacement copy of a building permit is twenty-five dollars. The reinspection fee is fifty dollars. Uh, work started prior to applying for a permit is double the fee. Uh, stop work order violation is a hundred and fifty dollars. And then, um, we'll go on to the next section, which is the building department fees, fines and penalties. Um, that's five hundred dash three, this is subsection five hundred dash three C, commercial building permit fees. Uh, new building, commercial, industrial, business, assembly, mercantile or hazardous. The fee is nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of a thousand dollars. Commercial additions and alterations, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Commercial roofing, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Solar panels, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Storage shed and accessory structures, two hundred square feet or greater, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, mechanical or sheet metal permits, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, siding or window indoor, um, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost, minimum fee a hundred and fifty dollars. Open porches or decks, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, demolition, nine dollars per thousand, uh, dollars of cost, um, minimum fee is a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, fences, seven footer greater, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Insulation, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, retaining walls, forty-eight inches from the bottom of the footing or greater is nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost with a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, automatic fire sprinkler systems, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost, minimum fee a hundred and fifty. Temporary trailer, nine dollars per thousand dollars of cost, minimum fee a hundred and fifty dollars. Tent is seventy-five dollars per tent, signs are seventy-five dollars per sign. Certificate of Inspection, seventy-five dollars, replacement copy of building permit, twenty-five dollars. Reinspection fee, fifty dollars, work started prior to applying for a permit is double the fee. A stop work order violation is a hundred and fifty dollars. Connor, would you like to continue on for a couple of sections?
Sure. Then we have five hundred dash three D, residential electric per- electrical permit fees. New construction with service, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars. New construction without service, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Additions and alterations with a building permit, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Alterations without a burn building permit, fifty-five dollars, service charge, seventy-five dollars. Temporary service and meter set, one hundred dollars, solar installation, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. In-ground pool, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, above ground pool or hot tub, fifty-five dollars. Generator, fifty-five dollars. Alarm systems, smokes, carbon monoxide heat detectors, burglar alarms, et cetera, fifty-five dollars. Low voltage systems, phone, data, speakers, et cetera, fifty-five dollars. Appliance outlet, air conditioning, dryer, range, furnace, water heater, E V charger, et cetera, fifty-five dollars. Reinspection fee, fifty-five dollars, late permit fee, double fee. If cited violations go uncorrected or adequate access is not obtained, a reinspection fee will occur. Five hundred dash three E, commercial electrical permit fees, fines and penalties. Cost of work up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars, the fee is two hundred dollars. Cost of work over twelve thousand five hundred dollars is two hundred dollars plus twenty-five dollars for each additional twenty-five hundred dollars in cost of work. Low voltage systems, phone, data, temperature control, alarm, et cetera, one hundred dollars. Reinspection fee, fifty dollars and late permit application is double fee.
Thank you. John, you want to do the next couple?
Uh, subsection five hundred three F, plumbing and gas residential permits, fees, fines, penalties. Uh, new construction or additions is, uh, plumbing, seventy-five dollars plus ten dollars per fixture. Gas is seventy-five dollars plus per fixture. Replacement of multiple fixtures, fixtures, plumbing, fifty dollars plus ten dollars per fixture. Gas, fifty dollars plus ten dollars per fixture. Replacement of a single fixture, plumbing, fifty dollars, gas, fifty dollars. Gas water heater, the fee is seventy-five dollars, generator, the fee is seventy-five dollars. Reinspections or late permit fee, the fee is fifty dollars. Uh, note, replacement of gas water heater requires a gas permit and a plumbing permit filled out. Uh, it's a seventy-five dollar flat fee. Subsection five dash three G, gas, commercial permit fee, penalties. New construction and additions, plumbing is a hundred and twenty-five dollars plus ten dollars per fixture. Gas is a hundred and twenty-five dollars plus ten dollars per fixture. Replacement of multiple fixtures, uh, plumbing is seventy-five dollars plus ten dollars per fixture. Gas is seventy-five dollars plus ten dollars per fixture. Any inspection not specified, the fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Reinspection or late permit fee, the seventy-five dollars. Going to, uh, subsection five hundred four. Council on Aging, fees, fines, penalties, uh, for lunch, three dollars per meal. Meals on Wheels, fee is three dollars per meal. Fitness cards for E L residents, twenty visits, fee is ten dollars. Fitness cards for non-residents, twenty visits, the fee is fifteen dollars. Events slash programs, the fee varies. Transportation in town of origination, one dollar each way. Transportation out of town of origination, three dollars each way. Building rental, fifty dollars. Exercise classes, six, that being six classes, is ten, a ten dollar fee. Breakfast is fifty cents to a dollar fifty per item. Newsletter advertisements, business card size ad is four hundred dollars per year. Electronic signage, full page slide is six hundred dollar fee. Electronic signage, a half page slide is four hundred dollar fee. Food pantry T-shirt is ten dollar fee. Vendor fees, holiday craft fair and farmer's market is twenty-five to thirty-five dollars per vendor. And by subsection five hundred dash five, public works department fees, fines, penalties. Drain layers, license or renewal, fifty dollar fee. Trench permit is fifty dollar fee, rail trail connection is a one hundred and fifty dollar fee. Permit to open public way is a two hundred dollar fee. Omen seed, other than water and sewer entrance, is, the fee is actual cost. Payment repair, other than water and sewer entrance, is actual cost. Paper street development submission fee is two hundred and fifty dollars plus one dollar per foot of developed roadway. Utility markouts, a hundred dollar fee. Uh, for the reference, this fee only applies to contractors and or utility companies. Engineering inspection rate, two hour minimum, fifty dollars per hour plus I R S standard rate mileage. Under reference, the time and a half or double time may apply.
Thank you. Kathy, you want to do, um, the five hundred five B and five C?
Yeah. All right. Uh, excuse me, uh, subsection five hundred five, public works departments fees, fines, penalties. Uh, subsection five hundred five B, life cycle maintenance fees. Uh, cost of area being disturbed is I don't know, length times width times.
Yeah, just do it L times.
These, um, L times W times U C times P C I equals L C M C. Uh, current unit cost is four dollars per square foot. Uh, five-year roadway moratorium fee is twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, it's less than a year old. Two thousand dollars between one and two years old. Uh, fifteen hundred dollars if it's between two and three years old. One thousand dollars if it's between three and four years old and five hundred dollars if it's between four and five years old. The, uh, D P W reserves the right to waive the L C M C or moratorium excavation fees if it is determined to be in the best interest of the town. And, uh, subsection five hundred five, public works department fees, fines, penalties. Subsection five hundred five C, sanitary sewer service fees. Uh, sewer connection license per dwelling, fifteen hundred dollars. Inspection fee per dwelling, fifty dollars. Service installation, street only, five hundred dollars, uh, reference comment, installation by town. Uh, sewer block, a hundred and twenty-five dollars minimum charge. Uh, references betterment properties. Sewer availability charge per year, thirty dollars, betterment properties. Illegal hookup to sewer, five hundred dollars, betterment properties. Uh, camera system before acceptance, fifteen hundred dollars, reference comments subdivisions. Uh, vacuum or air testing of sewer manholes is a hundred and fifty dollars minimum charge. Uh, reference comments inspections by town. Uh, sewer manholes and inverts inspections, one hundred and fifty dollar minimum charge, inspections by town. Sewer tie in inspection, a hundred and fifty dollar minimum charge, inspections by town. Camera of sewer system over five hundred linear feet, one thousand dollars, inspections by town. Camera of sewer system under five hundred linear feet, five hundred dollars, inspections by town.
Kathy, you want to do five D and five E?
Yes, I will. By section five hundred dash five D, storm water service charges. Storm water connection license per dwelling, fifty dollars. Inspection fee per dwelling, fifty dollars. Storm drain entrance fee, if available, per building, two hundred dollars. Illegal hookup to storm water, three hundred dollars. Camera system before acceptance, fifteen hundred dollars, and the references for subdivisions. Vacuum or air testing of storm water manholes, one hundred and fifty dollar minimum charge, inspections by town. Storm water manholes and invert inspections, one hundred and fifty dollars minimum charge, also inspections by town. Storm water tie-in inspection, one hundred and fifty dollars minimum charge, inspection by town. Camera of storm water system over five hundred linear feet, one thousand dollars, inspection by town. Camera of storm water system under five hundred linear feet, five hundred dollars. Inspection by town, small pusher camera of storm water system up to one hundred and eighty linear feet, two hundred and fifty dollars. Section five hundred dash five E, transfer station fees. Residents only, dump sticker for allowable items, the fee is fifty dollars yearly. Landscapers, grass and leaves only, fifty dollars per pickup truck load. Must purchase coupons, landscapers, grass and leaves only, seventy-five dollars per dump truck load. Must purchase coupons, bulk items such as a couch, a rug, a table, et cetera, ten dollars per item. Fifteen dollars per item for a mattress, a box spring, twenty dollars per carload or fifty dollars per pickup truck load and must also have a yearly sticker. Electronics disposal, small free-on item, twenty-five dollars, large refrigerator, fifty dollars. Computer monitor, twenty dollars, TV nineteen inches or smaller, twenty dollars. TV larger, large rather, or console, thirty-five dollars, computers, fifteen dollars. And then there is items for sale, wood chips are ten dollars per truckload, two cubic yards and you must self-load. Compost is twenty dollars per chuck, truckload, two cube cubic yards and again must self-load. And loam, twenty-five dollars per truckload, two cubic yards must self-load.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to continue on, uh, we're still in, uh, subsection five hundred dash five, public works department fines, fees, fines and penalties, um, subsection five hundred dash five F. This is water service fees. Um, water entrance license per dwelling, one thousand five hundred dollars. Inspection fee per dwelling is fifty dollars. Service installation deposit is five hundred dollars and the reference is installation by town. Uh, water service renewal deposit is five hundred dollars. A water meter tested is a hundred and fifty dollar minimum charge and the reference is cost plus thirty percent. Uh, water service entrance with a mall is thirty dollars per foot. Tapping of main for one inch tap is three hundred dollars. Hydro testing, the fee is five hundred dollars plus time. Uh, water turned on or off is fifty dollars. Um, additional service charge, per inch of pipe diameter is fifteen dollars. Uh, double outlet stand pipe wet and each hydrant is twenty-five dollars. A water entrance for fire service is one thousand five hundred dollars. Backflow device inspections are a hundred dollars. Uh, backflow device, a new device application or registration is seventy-five dollars. And continuing on with the wa- water service fees, illegal hookup to water is five hundred dollar fee. Meter tampering is five hundred dollars. Um, water meter installation is the actual cost, under reference is time and materials. Um, temporary water meter connection, a hundred dollars, the reference is fee plus water usage. Uh, hydro testing of a fire hydrant, no, hydro testing fire sprinkler system is five hundred dollars. Reference is fee plus time. Hydrant fire flow testing for each location is two hundred dollars. Flushing or injection of C L two and filling mains is one thousand five hundred dollars. Hydro testing of water mains, fee is five hundred dollars. Uh, water system tie-in to existing main is five hundred dollars. And we'll continue on with, um, five hundred dash five, the public works department fees, fines and penalties. Subsection five hundred dash five G, uh, water, sewer and storm water rates. Water, standard rate, rate is four dollars and twenty cents per one hundred cubic feet. Water, the agricultural rate is three dollars and fifteen cents per one hundred cubic feet. Uh, the sewer rate is four dollars and ten cents per one hundred cubic feet. Uh, storm water rates, single family home, thirty-two dollars. The land use code, uh, under reference is one O one. Residential condos billable, the fee is thirty-two dollars. The land use code is one O two. Uh, two homes on a single parcel, it, the fee is forty-two dollars and it's land use code one O nine. Uh, two family homes, eighty-two dollars, uh, code one O four. Three family homes, the fee is eighty-two dollars, the code is one O five. Uh, apartments, four to eight units, the fee is eighty-two dollars, the land use code is one eleven. Apartments greater than eight units, fee is five hundred and ten dollars, the land use code is one twelve. Congregate living facilities, the fee is five hundred and ten dollars, the land use code is number one two five. Farms, uh, forty-two dollars. Land use codes are seven twelve V, seven fourteen V, seven fifteen, seven seventeen V, seven nineteen V. Mixed use parcels, the fee is sixty dollars. The land use code is zero one three and, and chapter land residential. Golf courses, the fee is five hundred and fifty dollars, the land use code is zero three eight. We are continuing on with, um, the storm water rates. Um, mixed residential, the fee is sixty dollars. The land use code is, uh, zero one six, zero one seven, zero one eight. Uh, towers, the fee is a hundred and ten dollars, the land use code is four three one and four three one V. Bacon industrial, the fee is thirty-two dollars. The land use codes are four forty, four forty-one and four forty-two. Um, commercial and industrial. Impervious surface, if it's, uh, it's the best way to read this whole thing. So, under items and services, um, commercial and industrial, mixed use, commercial, residential, which is predominantly commercial and commercial condos. Those all contain a fee based on the impervious surface. It's less than one acre, the fee is two hundred dollars. If it's between one and two acres, the fee is two hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Between two and five acres, the fee is three hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Between five and ten acres, the fee is four hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Uh, more than ten acres, the fee is five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh more than ten acres, the fee is five hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Uh the reference is land use codes, uh three hundreds, four hundreds. Uh zero three one, three four three, nine six two, nine five four, nine six two V. Nine six zero, nine five seven and nine six one R. Then we have exempt parcels residential, the fee is forty-two dollars. The land use code is nine hundreds. Exempt parcels residential vacant, the fee is thirty-two dollars and again the land use code is nine hundreds. Exempt parcels, non-residential, it's based on the impervious surface. Again, less than one acre is two hundred dollars. Between one and two acres is two hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Between two and five acres is three hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Between five and ten acres is four hundred and fifty dollars per acre. More than ten acres is five hundred and fifty per acre. Again, that's for land use codes in the nine hundreds. Connor.
Right. Five hundred dash six, fire department fees, fines and penalties. Permits inspections, any permit or inspection fifty dollars with a reference to mass general law, chapter one forty-eight, section ten A. Ambulance service, BLS emergency and non-emergency transport, one thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars and three cents. BLS emergency transport Medicare, four hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. BLS non-emergency Medicare, two hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-five cents. ALS one emergency or non-emergency transport, two thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty-six cents. ALS one emergency transport Medicare, five hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents. ALS one non-emergency transport Medicare, three hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. ALS two emergency transport, three thousand one hundred fifty dollars and thirteen cents. ALS two emergency transport Medicare, seven forty-nine. There's seven hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Mileage per mile, thirty-five dollars. Mileage per mile Medicare, eight dollars and forty cents. And five hundred dash seven, health department fees fines and penalties. Under food service, we have food establishment, retail food service, bakery, supermarket, two hundred dollars. With a reference of less than two hundred thousand dollars gross sales. Food establishment, retail food service, bakery, supermarket, five hundred dollars for gross sales of two hundred thousand to a million dollars. And food establishment, retail food service, bakery and supermarket is seven hundred dollars for greater than one million dollars in gross sales. Uh plan review, new food service establishment, one hundred dollars. Fats, oil and grease install review, seventy-five dollars. Residential food permit, two hundred dollars, catering, two hundred dollars. Frozen dessert, twenty-five dollars, hot dog cart, a hundred fifty dollars. Milk and cream, ten dollars. Mobile food truck, two hundred dollars. Temporary food service, fifty dollars, reference one day. Temporary food service, one hundred dollars, reference two to three days. Temporary food service, a hundred seventy-five dollars, reference four to fifteen days or fourteen days. Farmer's market, seventy-five dollars. Health and sanitation, tobacco, three hundred dollars. Tanning, three hundred dollars, recreational camps, two hundred fifty dollars. Swimming pool, spa or waiting pool, three hundred twenty-five dollars. Body art establishment and practitioner. Body art establishment, two hundred fifty dollars, practitioner, one hundred dollars, that's fifty dollars. Probationary, fifty dollars, guest or temporary, fifty dollars. And environmental, we have disposal works plan review, two hundred dollars. Disposal works construction, one hundred fifty dollars. Soil sustain, soil suitability site assessment, one hundred fifty dollars for the first two hours. Soil suitability site assessment, fifty dollars for each additional hour over two. Septic hauler, one hundred fifty dollars. Septic system installer, three hundred dollars. Solid waste hauler, three hundred fifty dollars. One-time residential bulk pickup, fifty dollars. Outdoor wood boilers, fifty dollars, compost bin, forty dollars, rain barrels, sixty dollars. Late filing fee, fifty dollars per week. Animal control violations, first offense, twenty-five dollars with a reference to E codes, uh three fifteen dash two A. Second and third offenses within a calendar year, fifty dollars. Fourth and subsequent offenses, in addition to a mandatory hearing, seventy-five dollars. Redemption of dog impounded for violations of animal control bylaw, twenty-five dollars. The reference to E code three.
Thank you. John, would you like to carry on for number eight and nine?
Um subsection five hundred dash eight, library fees, fines and penalties. Copies for the first floor, fifteen cents per page. Copies for the second floor, twenty-five cents per page. Printing second floor, black and white, that's gonna be a fee of fifteen cents per page. Printing second floor color, that is twenty-five cents per page. Fax machine, second floor, that's one dollar per page. A lost items, the fee varies by item. Out of state cardholders, uh it is a fee of thirty-eight dollars yearly. In replacement, library cards, two dollar fee. Moving on to subsection five hundred dash nine, local licensing authority fees, fines and penalties. For entertainment, one-day entertainment license is a fifty dollar fee. Uh the entertainment, an entertainment license is seventy-five dollars. Sunday entertainment license is seventy-five dollar fee. Automatic amusement license per device is a seventy-five dollar fee. Common vic to vic uh.
Victular.
Victular, thank you. Uh common victular license is a fifty dollar fee. Used car, uh used car license class one is a one hundred and twenty-five dollar fee. Used car license class two is a one hundred and twenty-five dollar fee. Uh and then annual liquor licenses with a reference to E code subsection three ten dash nine. A one-day liquor license, sixty-five dollar fee. Restaurant, all alcoholic beverages on premises is a two thousand two hundred dollar fee. Restaurant beer and wine on premises is a thousand dollar fee. Package store, all alcoholic beverages is a two thousand two hundred dollar uh fee, this is for off premises. Package store beer and wine off premises is a thousand dollar fee. Farmer series pouring permit is a five hundred dollar fee. Club license is a six hundred and fifty dollar fee. And a veterans club license is a six hundred and fifty dollar fee. Uh under liquor license penalties with a reference to E code subsection three ten dash eight. License to store inflamables, license to use land for the keeping, storage or sale of petroleum fluids or compounds for resale. Or other commercial use, that is a one hundred and five dollar fee. With a reference to new license or license renewal. Five hundred dash ten, planning and community development department fees, fines and penalties. Five hundred dash ten A conservation commission fees. Conservation commission penalties with a reference to E code. Subsection four twenty-four dash eleven B. The town of East Long Meadow does not assess additional application fees. Beyond what is prescribed within the Wetlands Protection Act, WPA. See the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection website, website. Wetland fee, transmittal forms and appendices for all WA permitting fees.
Matt, you wanna do the last couple?
Yep. Subsection five hundred ten B, planning department. Uh definitive subdivision plan review, S D dash D. Uh four hundred dollars plus thirty dollars per lot, plus two dollars per a butter notice. Uh preliminary subdivision plan review, S D dash P. Uh four hundred dollars plus two dollars per a butter notice. Approval not required, A and R review, seventy dollars. Site plan review. Site, uh two hundred fifty dollars plus two dollars per a bu- a butter notice. Uh special permit, S P, two hundred fifty dollars plus two dollars per a butter notice. Site plan review waiver, Form W, twenty-five dollars. Parking plan review, seventy dollars. Zoning verification requests, thirty dollars per property.
And five, subsection five hundred ten C zoning board of appeals. Zoning variance, Z V, be one hundred dollars administrative appeals, Z A A. One hundred dollars plus two dollar per a butter notice. I'll get the next one, sorry, I got. Subsection five hundred eleven, police department fees, fines and penalties. Uh Massachusetts LTC application slash renewals, one hundred dollars. And then the reference comments, mass general law, chapter one forty, subsection one thirty-one.
And Kathy, would you like to finish this off?
Of course. Okay, we are at uh section five hundred dash twelve, town clerk fees, fines and penalties. Town clerk fees for amendments correcting errors in a record of birth, twenty-five dollars. And the reference for all of this is E code, section one thirty-five dash four. For furnishing a certificate of birth, fifteen dollars. For filing a certificate of a person conducting business under any title. Other than the person's real name, forty dollars. For filing by a person conducting business under any title other than the person's real name. Of a statement of change of residence or of discontinuance, retirement or withdrawal from. Or of a change of location of such business, twenty dollars. For recording the name and address, the date and number of the certificate issued to a person. Registered for the practice of podiatry in the Commonwealth, twenty dollars. For amendments correction, correcting errors in a record of death, twenty-five dollars. For furnishing a certificate of death, fifteen dollars. For entering a notice of intention of marriage, forty dollars. For entering a certificate of marriage filed by persons married out of the Commonwealth, forty dollars. For issuing a certificate of marriage, fifteen dollars. For furnishing an abstract copy of a record of marriage, ten dollars. For amendments correcting errors in a record of marriage, twenty-five dollars. For recording a certificate of registration granted to a person to engage in the practice of optometry. Or issuing a certified copy thereof, twenty dollars. For recording the name of the owner of a certificate of registration. As a physician or osteopath in the Commonwealth, twenty dollars. For recording an order granting locations of poles, piers, abutments or conduits. Alterations or transfers thereof, an increase in the number of wires and cable. Or attachments under the provisions of MGL. Chapter one sixty-six, section twenty-two, forty dollars. For recording a deed or lot or plot in a public burial place or cemetery, five dollars. A raffle permit, ten dollars, street lists, twenty-two dollars. Voting precinct maps, ten dollars. A dog license, ten dollars. A dog license for non-spayed or neutered uh dogs is twenty dollars. Dog license after due date, an additional ten dollars. That is reference to E code, section three, one five dash three. Kennel license, one to four dogs, thirty dollars, five to ten dogs, sixty dollars. More than ten dogs, one hundred dollars. For the end.
Thank you. Wow. Um, okay, um. Under protocol, um typically what we would do is ask the applicant to give the reasons and the rationale for this proposed bylaw. So I will step up and do that. Um the reasons for this bylaw is under charter. Um the town council is responsible for all fees, fines and penalties. When we uh moved everything to E code, we created a section for fees, fines and penalties, a schedule. Um the reason we did this is so that on a regular basis, on a yearly basis, like what we do, the liquor licenses. Um we can go through and take a quick look at our fees. Send them out to the different departments, ask if there's any updates that they would recommend. So that we're looking at these, um I believe. Kathy, you would probably know better, but when we did the liquor license renewal a few years ago. It had been multiple fifteen.
Twenty-nine years.
Oh, sorry, twenty-nine years since we had actually looked at them and adjusted them. Uh and so what ends up happening is, you know, like with that, there was such an increase, it creates more of an issue. Um and not to mention with this being on E code. If someone goes on and types in, let's say, dog license. It'll automatically come up so that they'll see what the different fees and all are. Um it's more for transparency than uh anything, but I think it will really help the town out. That's the reason for doing it. Genie.
Did you wanna read the conservation ten, five hundred ten A into the record or?
I'm getting.
Okay.
That may be an amendment to that.
Okay.
So what we just read into the record is what's uh bylaw committee had recommended. Um and these were changes. There was changes under the building uh department, um the way he assessed the fees. Um there's a few other changes, there was some information like impervious surfaces. Um that on the first reading was very confusing with the less than and greater than signs and all that we've corrected. Um so this is what has been presented by the bylaw committee. After the bylaw committee looked at it and made their recommendations. Under um subsection five hundred dash ten, the planning and community development department. Um ten A conservation commission fees. I tried to find um. With just the information that was given to us by uh at our time, um Bailey Mitchell. A list of what the fees were. And he said, yeah, you just go on to the mass uh wetlands protection site and uh the fees are all right there, so we don't have to include them. Except I spent almost an hour and a half just trying to find the categories for the fees. And I said, well, maybe it's just me, so I asked Marilyn to do it. And after she spent quite a bit of time, she called and said, I can't even find the fees. So I would like to introduce. An amendment to what we just read. Um which lists out the fees basically. Um so that was sent to everyone as a second sheet. Um it would be subsection five hundred dash ten A conservation commission fees. Reference is these fees are set by the state. Or to three ten CMR, four point one zero, subsection wetlands. And um subsection WW eighteen, subsection fourth. Um like I said, it's uh actually, it's three hundred and forty-seven pages of information to get to that location. Uh and in that location, it basically says that everything under category A. Or category one, the fee is a hundred and ten dollars. Anything that falls under category two, the fee would be five hundred dollars. Anything that falls under category three, the fee is one thousand fifty dollars. Category four, the fee would be one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Category five, which is work on docks, piers, um. Revetments, dykes, et cetera, which is coastal or inland. The fee is four dollars per linear foot. The reference is the total fee is not less than a hundred dollars or more than two thousand. Um category six, boundary delineations for bordering vegetated wetlands. The fee is two dollars per linear foot. The reference is not to exceed two hundred dollars for activities associated with a single family house. Or two thousand dollars for all other activities. Um conservation commission penalties, the reference is E code subsection four two four dash eleven B. So I would ask that we use this in place of ten A. That we had read in. Just ask the council what their thoughts are on it. I just think it's, it's short, it gives the categories, it gives the fee. Instead of just sending someone to somewhere under mass general law to try and find it.
Connor, I'll start, um. I still don't necessarily like including the different categories and fees because inevitably. The state will change those at some point and we're not gonna have them updated and kept in sync at the right time. And then that would kind of be confusing to residents if they looked at E code and said, you're only supposed to be charging me a hundred ten dollars. But the state says we're actually supposed to be charging you two hundred dollars now for something. However, I do think if we wanted to include what you put in the. Reference comments fields to make it easier to find what some of those are under. Like five hundred dash ten A, we're right now in the current version, there is no reference comments. If we wanted to put like the, these fees are set and refer to like three ten CMR, et cetera. That would be more navigable.
What's the thought? Any other comments?
Yeah, I agree, I was, I was gonna pretty much say the same thing, is my concern would be that this won't be kept. Current to the state, if the state changes it, would be the one thing. So unless we have some type of mechanism that would make sure it's in sync.
So the only thing I would say to that is the state sets certain other fees. Um such as under the police department, the license to carry. And if they change that, then we're gonna have to be playing catch-up too.
Yeah, could add a, maybe a note simply where it says it's, you know, subjective. Change of state law, you know, to make, maybe make it more, perhaps more clear.
I think most of the fees have been set for quite some time and it's not something that gets changed every year. Cause the state doesn't seem to change mass general law unless there's two. because the state doesn't seem to change mass general law unless there's two.
But again, with that being said, um, I mean, I think the main thing is category six is probably used the most, which is the border and vegetated wetlands. Um, but again, uh, either way, I think the fee schedule works. Um, the consensus of the board be to take what we originally read in and add um, under reference, uh, these fees are set by the state, referred to three, ten CMR, four point one oh subsection wetlands and WW eighteen four.
Yeah, I think that qualifies it.
Do you want to motion to amend?
Please.
I move to amend the proposed chapter five hundred fee fine and penalty schedule that was presented under five hundred dash ten A conservation commission fees to add reference comments. These fees are set by the state, referred to three, ten CMR, four point ten subsection wetlands and in parentheses, and then in parentheses WW eighteen, then outside the parentheses four.
Second.
Having a motion made in seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So the reasons are done. Um, this is a public hearing. So at this time, I would like it to open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to step forwards and give their thoughts and concerns and statements on this? I don't I don't see anyone coming forwards. I guess everyone's happy with the fees. It's awesome. Um, so at this time, I would entertain a motion um, to close the public input portion or to close the public hearing.
So.
Second.
So we're closing the public hearing. Made the motion seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So before we do motion to approve amended, I would like to point out that there are a couple of sections within E code um, that the fee schedule is going to be different. Let's say the dog licenses, I believe it was the late license. So within E code, section three fifteen dash three, I think it is. Um, it says twenty dollars. The fee schedule is going to say ten. So if we could do a motion that basically accepts the fee schedule and suggests that any changes within E code be made to coincide with the fee schedule. Connor, you want to try that?
Yes, but before we do that, I have one.
No.
Point.
Did I miss a capitalization?
No, um. I was just thinking about it more and overall, I think the whole fee schedule is good and it makes it easy for the residents to and business folks in town to find all the different things that are applicable to them. The only thing I question is five hundred dash five G where we have this water sewer and storm water rates. And I know we talked about this at the the bylaw subcommittee before, but that one seems different to me than and some penalties because it's like something that we're setting as part of the annual budget process. And I know we had talked that we would have to like amend this a year in the budget process, but it almost seems unnecessary to like put those in the same schedule, just the water and sewer rates that are charged. Everything else I'm fine with being in there, even if we wanted to keep the storm water rates since those tend to not change as often, but every year the water and sewer rate is changing all the time.
Not always, but.
Much.
Try to keep them consistent occasionally, but then we usually fall behind. Any counselors have any thoughts on it? So go ahead, Kathy.
I'm trying to recall the initial uh introduction of the the stormwater um mandate by the state and I wasn't there a chart or some guidance by the state when we had to create stormwater fees around how to go about doing it?
There was a chart submitted um when we did the was it the stormwater fee bylaw? Was the stormwater bylaw? Then there was this, there was another one.
Yes.
Stormwater fee bylaw?
That's when we created the enterprise fund.
Yes.
Right. Um, that chart was we made to make it easier.
Okay.
And it was all, it was all land use code. Um, and however, we broke it down and the first year um, we didn't even do the impervious area. And then we realized that that wasn't really fair to the small business that was paying the same five hundred dollar fee as Cartamonde.
Mm hmm.
So we tried to make it more equitable based on uh impact stormwater related. That's how the chart originated.
Okay.
We left those fees out of the bylaw, though, I think for the same reason that maybe we left some of the other ones out so that when it did get changed, eventually it would get changed in chapter five hundred only.
Which is where we're at in the chapter five hundred and you understand what you're saying, the rates are going to be adjusted and we have to hold a public hearing at the budget session each time. And that's why we figured if we're doing the public hearing anyways, and it's got to be advertised, then at that point, when we accept the change in rates, it automatically changes in the fee schedule. And there will be a few other things that we're going to have to do at that time, um, which will probably be um the ambulance service because that's adjusted basically on a yearly uh basis. Um, and it's for one year according to Chief Morsette, usually uh, the fees based on what Medicare says they can't charge. So so we do have to adopt those every year. My thought would be we leave it in for now. If it gets too cumbersome, we remove it.
That works. I have a question and comment. Now, this will be reviewed again unlike a it was a, we said a two, every two years or every year, this will be looked, the fee schedule will be looked back upon by the body.
I would suggest that we do it at the same time we do the liquor license.
And we we said, I mean, we do that every two years.
We're gonna, we'll have to do it.
Yearly, every year.
Yeah, it'll just have to be part of our operation after the budget is approved.
Mm hmm.
Um.
Get things.
I mean.
Yeah.
And I think when we. Dave has been trying to do, for instance, his building budget based on how much revenue he's bringing in, so it sort of breaks even. So if these rates don't really stack up with what he needs to do operationally, most of his rates will probably change too, or fees rather. Um, and again, water, sewer, stormwater. However, at factor, we're just, we're just gonna have to make that part of our part of our yearly.
Thing now is dividing it up like this.
Yeah.
Divided up by departments. So literally the department can look at their fees in red, make a recommendation for changes to us so that we don't have to go through all of them. We can just look at the fees that they're recommending, an increase or a decrease. And I will like to point out that we did have a fee decrease through the clerks department. So it's not always in.
And I'll add that when we did this uh um at the bylaw committee, um, I I forget who brought this up, but I know we're we're pretty competitive with prices of fees as compared to some of the other communities. Um, I think possibly on the lower side on 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 certain fees. So
Yeah.
that's definitely a good thing that the public should. So it's not not everything is going up or, you know, it's above above average. In fact, it's average or below average.
So can I just clarify then, Ralph, if this fee schedule is now a bylaw, the hearing for the budget would satisfy one reading? See what I'm getting at? So would we have to read the fee schedule again, say, in July? Or I'm just, I'm 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 just trying to keep the process the way the process is, and that's usually the second reading is the public hearing.
Right. And obviously, we're going to know before a public hearing what the fees are. They'll be coming in.
I appreciate your confidence. We will.
Well, I I mean, typically, they submit the fees, hopefully not the Friday before Tuesday.
No, no, no. You that I guess what I'm saying is if we'd have to get that sort of first reading semi completed before changing.
Right.
Bylaw, right? Would have to be on the second reading at the budget hearing or?
The meeting immediately after.
Well, I guess, well, right, yeah.
I'm assuming it would probably be at the meeting where we accept the budget.
But then, yeah, you would have to do the first reading.
Public hearing.
Yep.
And then we usually vote after to accept the budget.
Okay, so I just want to, I just, you know what I'm saying? I just want to make sure we do.
Logistically, it's gonna.
Yes.
It, I think the first year or two is going to take us a little figuring out and I know the health department was saying that different fees come at different times and that they would like to bring them all together so that everything happens consistently. I think it's just a matter of moving stuff around until we figure out something that's really smooth uh going forwards.
I guess technically, if you just read the fee schedule in without any, the old one, and then the second reading was the amendments.
Yeah.
Good to go. So not trying to.
I don't want to.
Not trying to skirt.
I don't want to.
No, I don't think you'd have to.
No, I think it would.
You just need.
Yeah, no revisions until the second reading.
Right.
Right? So the first reading is just the technicality.
Yeah.
Which you wouldn't have to read because there's nothing to read because it hasn't been revised yet.
Right. And the second one's amendments.
Correct.
We're we're gonna toss this around a few different times, you know that.
Oh, yeah. Like it.
Does anyone want to read it again? So Connor, would you, is there any other comments?
I will make an attempt.
So I did notice uh one mistake that I made, but again, we read it correctly. I just have to add a decimal and two zeros to make it even. Um, and again, the numbering is not actually I remember E code, the numbering is not actually part of the code and they can adjust the numbering as they see fit to put it in the right setup. So this is just a suggestion going to them, so. So with that, Connor, take it away.
I move to approve the proposed new bylaw, chapter five hundred fee fine and penalty schedule as amended and making any corresponding changes or references in code to reference the new chapter five hundred fee fine and penalty schedule.
I will second that.
Any further comments? Okay, we've got a motion made and seconded. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're good. Thank you, everyone. I know this was a long time coming.
Yep.
We roughly a year since we first brought it up, so. Leave to date that is our longest one. Now we can work on that. Okay. Ah, we are under orders of the day, um, eight A licensing matters. Not believe there's any. Under eight B financial matters, um. We have the acceptance of twenty twenty three emergency performance grant. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the twenty twenty three emergency management performance grant award in the amount of four thousand six hundred dollars per Massachusetts general law, chapter forty four, section fifty three A.
Second.
Made in seconded. Is there any discussion? I think it's awesome. Uh, again, another grant coming in um for stuff that we actually need, which is awesome. Motion made seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will go on to eight B two. Um, the acceptance of a donation to the fire department. Is there a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to accept the donation to the fire department in the amount of one hundred dollars from John and Sharon Corliss per Massachusetts general law, chapter forty four, section fifty three A.
I second.
Um, motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just like to say thank you exactly.
Much appreciated. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to number three, accepting uh the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's district local technical assistance program, Delta Grant. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's district local technician assistance program, Delta grant award in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars per Massachusetts general law, chapter forty four, section fifty three A. Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Discussion. Um, this is the Delta Grant from the Pioneer Valley Planning. Did we want to go through real quick and just uh tell the town what it is or?
Sure, um, we have a public service announcement first. I I don't believe we're supposed to call it a Delta Grant.
Oh.
I think one or both of us got scolded for using.
It sounds like.
It sounds, it should be.
Yeah, but okay, so this is not a Delta Grant. Delta, yeah. We stand corrected.
Um, do you, do you want to add anything or i- it's basically, um, again, we we fa- we've witnessed some things and Bailey started some things and you know, this is sort of in conjunction with almost everything else that's going on uh in the town and the planning department. Um, starting with the discussion about, uh, you know, the new high school and uh housing needs and not being able to stay in my house. And um, so we've uh partnered with PB PC to um sort of set up a um, a housing needs assessment to kind of uh sort of take an inventory of what we got in town, uh, what we need in town. Um, and sort of roll it into um the center town district um, when we lay that out and then perhaps hopefully a a comprehensive zoning um, sort of review, uh, which we're long overdue for. Um, so this is sort of, uh, I guess, kind of step one to figuring out what what the town of East Long Meadow has and needs in terms of housing.
Perfect. Want more?
I'll just, I'll just add that we've already been funded to undertake a housing production plan. And this is going to provide us with the data for what housing in the future needs to look like in East Long Meadow. So like where the needs are, and that's the needs assessment that we just got funded for.
Excellent.
That's excellent.
Thank you.
Again, another grant, uh, help us do it. And I do, uh, I do remember a few people mentioning that. Well, how do we know about this or that development? We don't even know what our housing needs are.
Right.
Well, this will take care of that for us. Perfect. So we had a motion made and seconded. Any other discussion on it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next up, we have um town manager to authorize a contract for a period exceeding three years. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the town manager to authorize a contract for property valuation services for a period which exceeds three years per Massachusetts general law, chapter thirty B, section twelve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any uh discussion?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
First, there is, and I promise I'm not going to keep asking. This is not me being lazy and I don't want to do this every three years. I promise you, there's always a good reason for these requests.
So do we have a time length on the contract? Say, sorry, in excess of three years seems to be open ended. You can give a thirty year contract.
Um, no.
I believe it's five year.
Yeah, I don't think that would be fiscally responsible, but this will be five.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and the reason that uh Diane went to five was, well, it was a few reasons, but we used to do the valuations every three years. And so we would have somebody come in and like the year after or in between a valuation. And the reason was so we'd never got a new contractor who had knew nothing about the town in the year that we have to do this full scale valuation. Well, now valuations are due every five years. And we're at a point where we don't want to get into that habit of every five years and every three years. If we just move out to every five, we're never going to hit that. So every valuations are. We're never gonna hit that. So every valuations are five, we'll have a consultant for five. And valuations were done in twenty three and they'll be done in twenty eight again. So we'll have this. Consultant for three years before the valuation. So they will be well up to speed and obviously. Every five years after that will be the same. It'll be year four with our consultant when they do the the full scale valuation. Um. Any other? Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
So my next thing.
Yep.
On page fourteen, under uh effective date.
Yep.
Um, we have it listed that uh the execution will be by the contractor and the municipal finance director.
Okay.
Um, I personally would prefer to see that instead of the director, it's the town manager.
It would be.
Okay.
So, um, this is a, a, I don't know, it doesn't say it anymore, but this is still a draft.
Okay.
It's probably, I didn't, we didn't wanna get too far into it without knowing that you had any.
Questions.
So.
And the only reason I bring that up is we've had issues. Or so the town manager shouldn't be signing all contracts.
Oh, that is correct. So I, we will make that change.
Everything looked good to me.
Yep.
Was there any questions or comments from anyone? Um, you had a motion made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Um, we have minutes to approve. It's the motion for minutes.
I make a motion to approve the January twenty third, twenty twenty four open session minutes.
I can.
Made in seconded. Any discussion on them? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, under old business. Uh, we have the withdrawal of a proposed bylaw amendment regarding backyard hens. Um, we received an email from David, uh, please, uh, David Gardner, which is a. Um, building commissioner. Um, please consider this a request to withdraw the proposed bylaw backyard hen by law. Uh, amendment without prejudice for any further town council hearings. Um, I asked him to just submit a withdrawal of it because it had come through us and that's what he did. Uh, I don't believe. That's more of a notification than anything. So he has withdrawn it.
Was there any reason, more reason, matter, just?
Did you sit and go through? So.
It's because of.
There was.
As a result, as a result of that. Public discussion.
Dave took a, uh, Dave took a beating. Um. But so just to further elaborate and I won't take up too much time, this will, this can't go away. Um, we have to do something as our bylaws read right now. Hens as an accessory use is not allowed anywhere. So almost everybody that has a chicken in their yard is in violation of our bylaw. So. As an accessory use. We gotta put something on the books somehow because I, we're certainly not gonna send Dave out. To write tickets for everybody with chickens.
Yeah, because that that was kind of my point. I, and that was kind of the question I was just gonna ask. So it's like, you know, there needs to be like. I watched some of the public portion of that meeting, like there needs to be some limit. Like, I'm not saying like I, we're not in some totalitarian system. We wanna like, you know, take away everybody's chickens. But I think it's also a little irresponsible to have hundreds or thousands, you know, like there has to be some type of top.
So at minimum, under the accessory use table, it at least has to say why, like, yes, you can have chickens, right? It.
poultry.
Poultry, that, yeah, whatever, whatever, whatever that may be. We also have. A sort of a use that's allowed almost everywhere and that's horses. Uh, every ten thou- you can have up to four.
No, one thousand.
Ten thousand.
Hundred thousand square, but up to four. Up to four.
Yeah, I believe. So we could try, we we we, we gotta craft something.
Yeah.
So the reason Dave even brought this up was he had nothing to enforce. There was nothing that he could enforce, which. He didn't wanna enforce everyone. This is why it came up. So it's not, he's withdrawn this bylaw.
particular.
But this issue has to be remedied. Or else we can't enforce anything. So or we enforce everything, which is worse than or sort of what everybody's point was that came in opposition of this bylaw was. They didn't want the enforcement. Well, the way our laws are written, we have no choice. We have to enforce it. And I think everybody knows Dave at this point that he's very thorough and excellent at his job and. He he's the one that found the hole in the, in the code in the first place. So. Again, we're not, we're not taking away everybody's chickens, but we at least have to allow them. In one's, one way or another. And again, that's could be as easy as changing the use table to say yes.
So I, I told Dave I would work on a accessory use bylaw. Um, based on the farming and all uh aspect that we have and see if we can't. Between me and him, come up with something that would work for everyone.
Perfect.
Fair enough.
Um, new business, you're talking about a letter of commitment to join um age and dementia friendly Massachusetts network. So I believe. This is just a request, um. Myself and you to sign a letter basically saying that we wanna continue on.
Yep.
With the dementia friendly uh through the council of aging.
Yeah, I mean, I I I would have signed, you know, without anybody's permission, but I figured you'd wanna just at least bring it up before you put your name down there and. Uh, it's just a, it's a requirement for Aaron's, uh, this is, this is something she's well underway. That's a requirement for this initiative to have a letter that says in council and the manager. Far fully supportive of of this initiative.
So I have, I had the uh pleasure of talking to a few people uh that go to the council of aging and they think this is fantastic. Um, they couldn't talk enough about it and they were thrilled that we were trying to do something like this. Um, so I don't know, um, do I need their permission to sign it?
But I don't know.
So how about I uh ask for your permission to sign the letter?
Want a motion?
Sure, that would be great.
I move to authorize the council president to sign the. Letter of commitment to join the age and dementia friendly Massachusetts network on behalf of the town council.
Second.
Marvelously put.
Motion made seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
At least.
Thank you.
Here we're, at least we'll make sure everything's proper. Action items. Um. So it would be my suggestion, um, that we do not do uh the executive session tonight considering we are. Um, without a couple of counselors. And that I would suggest that we move that to our March twelfth meeting. If everyone's okay with that. And is there any other action items that? We need going forwards. Okay, hearing none, then I would uh entertain a motion to adjourn. Marilyn, would you like?
Oh, it's Marilyn. I will second that.
That's the biggest pause I've ever heard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aha, aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.